Good evening, everyone. We're going to call to order the meeting of the Dudley Charlton Regional School Committee. It's Wednesday, October 25th. The time is 7:00 PM and we're at Shepherd Hill Regional High School. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, and we're going to take a moment of silence in honor of Shawn Morango. Moving on agenda, the first one is our Shepherd Hill Regional High School showcase. We have Principal Elwell to talk about Project Lead the Way.
Good evening. Madam Chair, I'm joined this evening by Mr. Tom Cordomash, who is the Science Department Coordinator. But more importantly, Mr. Cordomash was named the Massachusetts Project Lead the Way Educator of the Year. As of Monday, October 16th, I had the good fortune of attending a conference at WPI and Mr. Cordomash was presented with his award in front of roughly 500 of his peers from across the state. So it was a privilege to be part of that. I have seen here in my year and a half how Mr. Cordomash is more than deserving of this recognition based on what I've observed in his classroom, but it's always nice when we can send our ambassadors from this school district out into the state and for them to be recognized by their peers as well. And I know that's something that I'm very thankful for. So I have good assistance tonight in that I'm going to briefly just address Project Lead the Way, which is a program that we have had for several years. I believe initially around 2019 there, the school, before my time, secured the Innovation Pathways designations for both our biomedical pathway and our engineering pathway. And so I'm going to pass around a handout that outlines some of this information, but Project Lead the Way in general is a program that's been in existence for about 20 to 25 years, and it includes three components, really. It is a curriculum. It is a program that offers professional development, and it also offers networking opportunities. So teachers who are Project Lead the Way teachers interact with each other and other schools as well. So that's really what Project Lead the Way is about. It's a STEM-focused program, and there are elementary options. The Project Lead the Way elementary program is called Launch. The middle school program is referred to as Gateway. And at the high school level, there are different versions of Project Lead the Way. Shepherd Hill has chosen biomed and engineering, but there's also a computer science program as well. And so you will see on this handout that really when we talk about Project Lead the Way or when we talk about our innovation pathways, the two are inextricably linked. In order to achieve or to earn the biomed pathway certification or in order to earn the engineering pathway certification, students have to take at least two technical courses. And you'll see that the majority of those courses listed are Project Lead the Way courses. So it's a critical underpinning, Project Lead the Way, to both of our pathways. And quite frankly, they were ahead of the curve in terms of STEM education. Through the years, different groups in Massachusetts have provided funding for schools and districts to implement. Initially, it was the Massachusetts Math and Science Initiative, and then it became the Mass STEM Hub, and now it's the Mass Learning Project. So that organization evolves. But initially, when districts are implementing this programming, they typically provide a grant that lasts for three years, and the grant covers the cost of professional development for teachers. It covers the cost of the equipment and supplies that you need to teach the class because these are very specialized courses. And then, once you get beyond the initial three-year grant term, it's the district's responsibility to pay for the participation fee and to pay for any of the other professional development or supplies that are needed. There have been some studies that have come out in Massachusetts showing the link between Project Lead the Way curriculum and MCAS outcomes. Obviously, that was somewhat disrupted in recent years with the pandemic. However, there's a pretty strong correlation between the math and science content that students receive through Project Lead the Way and their performance on the MCAS exams. So here at Shepherd Hill, although both programs are assets, undeniably, our biomed pathway is incredibly strong and tends to be the one that attracts the most attention. And I credit that in large part to teachers like Mr. Cordomash, who helped to bring that curriculum alive in the classroom and really make connections between the curriculum and the workforce. A big focus of Project Lead the Way is connecting students to real-life applications, to industry partners, and making sure that we help to build that bridge from high school studies to post-secondary outcomes. And so we're fortunate to have several local partners who have been a part of this program since its initial implementation. I should note also that we are one of six schools in Massachusetts that has been awarded a distinguished school designation for our work in this area in 2020, '21, '21, '22, and '22, '23, and I have no doubt that we will add to that this year as well. It's incredibly rigorous curriculum, and if you were to visit the classrooms on the third floor, we have some very specialized equipment. Perhaps some of you have heard about our anatomy table, which is quite impressive, and a few other things that Mr. Cordomash could probably elaborate on a little bit better than I could. So if you want to just tell us a little bit about the biomed path.
One of the, I guess, biggest things is some of that specialized equipment that we've been able to get, sort of going along with how the pathways and Project Lead the Way are linked. Once we got that pathway grant, there was a substantial amount of money that came with that grant that we were able to use. We have a virtual dissection table that our students are able to use. If you go up to UMass Medical School, it's the same exact table that they're using for instruction there. We have a couple of patient simulators that we're able to get in the following year with some grant funds, and our students are able to learn like basic life support and things like that, even how to take blood pressure. But because we have this patient simulator, instead of just having them take blood pressure on their classmate, the teacher can control, we're going to, you know, increase it, decrease it, so every student that comes out, we can make it a little bit different, make sure that they really have those skills down. As we get more students who are getting through all four years, but when they get to that, their fourth year in the program, they complete a capstone project, and they're able to use those patient simulators now to test out these designs that they've come up with on their own. So our students have had some truly amazing capstone projects that they've come to at the end of this pathway, so really neat things. One of our sets of students was recognized, not last year but the year before, for having the best project in the state, and they designed a cancer treatment. And it was very, you know, amazing in that it wasn't just taking an existing cancer treatment. They took an existing idea of how immunology is applied to cancer treatment, but then tried, came up with a way that maybe we could apply it to a cancer that it wasn't currently being used for. It was, you know, pretty amazing work by our students. And that's probably the part that is most unique with these courses and with that pathway is that the students are getting to do a lot of projects like that where they're, you know, we're going to do a project on cancer treatment, but you're going to take it and do a design of your choosing. And the work that our students do is really amazing. That's what's made the program, I think, so successful is that our students really have a lot of interest in biomedical careers, and they've done some truly amazing stuff.
So earlier this year, we had, I believe, 18 students graduate from the biomed pathway, and it looks like for the class of 2024, we'll be on track, if not a little bit under 18. So there are a good number of students who do follow through on the two technical courses, the two advanced courses, as well as the capstone project and the career and academic planning portion of these pathways. So it's an innovative program. We're fortunate to have had it here for a number of years. I credit those who have come before me and others in the district who saw that this would be a good addition. And again, it's another example of how we are, number one, fortunate to have very talented instructors who can embrace these programs, but number two, there's the initiative and the will to really embrace 21st century models of learning. So I credit all who have contributed to the success of this program and the biomed program in particular. Happy to answer any questions.
Are we, is this going down to like the eighth grade level so that students know as far as like if they're picking classes so that that way they can potentially make sure that they are in the freshman class that will lead them on to their, you know, subsequent classes so that they can achieve this? And maybe those numbers can increase? Do you know what I mean? Do you know what I'm asking?
Yes. So this is something that we obviously tout as a strength of the school and something that we feel is desirable to not only our own students, but perhaps prospective students from other communities. And so there is an application process. Thankfully, the requirements are not rigid, so when you look at the two technical courses, two advanced courses, there's a lot of time in the four-year span to make sure that you address those, you know, without some of the other conflicts that students sometimes run into. You know, as all things, as we've learned, the schedule tends to be challenging, and there are students for whom three or four years of a world language is most important or taking additional APs are more important. And so there will always be conflict, but for these students, there is a good amount of flexibility in their schedule. And so when we think about how we reach out to the middle schools and how that course selection process plays out, this is information that is shared in the program of studies. In addition, the program application is also available and part of that and is on the guidance page website as well.
To Assistant Principal Elwell, we do have Project Lead the Way instructors at the middle school level. It's not at the biomed level, but there is an introduction to Project Lead the Way, and it is, there is a connection to it moving towards the high school studies as well.
Actually, now that I remember, when I went towards Dudley Middle, that, you know, going into that classroom, so that's why I just forgot that connection. But just making sure that, you know, the students that potentially, you know, might benefit from this, that they are, you know, on that path and not missing an opportunity.
Yeah, we're very lucky to have these with this program, yes.
Our participation is higher too than the 18 in terms of, so the 18 would be the students that chose to complete the pathway, and that's taking the, like, two advanced courses, two technical courses, and doing a capstone project. But we'll have 40 freshmen come up and take the first course, just not, and some of them will decide to take all the Project Lead the Way classes, but they're not interested in doing the other parts of that pathway program. But they still, we get higher rates of participation in those Project Lead the Way classes than those 18 or so that finish the whole thing.
Yeah. If memory serves me correctly, we have a participation target of about 25% of each grade level will go through a Project Lead the Way course, and I believe we're pretty much on track with meeting that target.
Yeah, in order to get that distinguished high school designation, we have to meet those targets.
Do you have, and I don't expect that you have it right now, but do you have any data that you could share with us at some point about, for the 25% that will go through those courses, what percent of those students are in our EL population, our special ed population and such?
Certainly.
Thank you. I don't expect it now.
Yes.
I'm just wondering, like, the equitable access that we provide for our students? And if, you know, do I have to make sure my kid is in an honors class to be able to access this? Because at some point, they're going to need to be able to take the APs to finish it, right?
So I think, I think, you know, there, so there are options for the, for the technical classes, and there are options for the advanced courses. So, you know, when we think of advanced courses, there are obviously AP classes here, but also college courses where we have agreements with QCC or elsewhere. I think on the engineering side, where admittedly our engineering pathway has not seen as many successful completions, the challenge that's often been cited has been, well, I'm interested in this pathway, but I don't want to take an AP class as one of my, as one of my options. So when we think about access, I think that's an important consideration, especially on the engineering pathway side, and perhaps that's why we haven't seen as many complete that pathway.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We're going to move on to the consent agenda items. We have approval of the warrant, which is going around, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 27th, the mid-level waiver, the middle-level waiver for wrestling, and approval of out-of-state field trip. This is for policy IJ08 that held, was held at Thompson, Connecticut on October 14th, 2023. Does anyone need anything taken out of the consent agenda? Okay. I entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda items.
So moved.
So moved?
Second?
Second? So move, chikering. Second de lobo.
Yep. Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm getting there. Okay. All those in favor? I unanimous. And Caitlin's here.
Yep.
Okay. We're going to move over to communications. Do any of our members have communications? Ms. Piancik, do you have something to tell us?
I have to share.
Oh, no, I think you need to share.
This is a very esteemed trophy.
This was, this was quite the feat this year. We, we won the best trunk for the Dudley PTO trunk and treat.
Oh, congratulations.
It truly was all Caitlin.
It truly was.
What was the theme?
I almost brought my prop because I figured maybe that would get attendance off, but, you know, I was running all over the towns tonight, so I was a little late because I was at Big Bad. But our theme was Barbie, and it was a little bit tricky with the wind and the balloons and stuff, but we had a big box for people to take pictures in, so I think that was kind of what got everyone's attention, so.
Congratulations.
Now we have a trophy. So look at that community engagement.
There we go. One check. Great. Does anybody else have any communications? Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to mention, because I was watching the Town of Charlton board meeting last night because I couldn't attend, but just they were mentioning about the all boards meeting again. Just as a reminder, November 7th at Charlton Senior Center, and I believe it, I can't quote you, I don't know what time it starts, I wanted to look it up, 6:30 or?
I want to say 6:30.
Yeah, I feel like that's what time they mostly start, so.
It was an RSVP. I think I sent you the flyer.
I need to do that.
Contact Mary Devlin.
Yeah.
I did not see that.
Yeah, in our email.
Yeah, I did, I did see it in the mail. It's one of those things I circle back to.
Sounds good. Okay. And another communication that our, that all, we do have a half day tomorrow for all students, as we have parent conferences and some PD going on, so just as a reminder, because some parents like me forget these things. Great. We're going to move on to our student representative report. Sophia Popovske.
Okay. So, so from the last time that we met, some of the past events that have happened are the homecoming dance and homecoming day. That was the 29th and the 30th of September. The dance was pretty good. It was definitely like, definitely a memorable dance. And then homecoming day, there weren't a lot of like tents as like there have been in the past, which was kind of like a little bit disappointing, but we had a good time. A lot of the sports teams played on our, like, football field, and it was pretty fun. And the football game was very, like, spirited and fun. On October 4th, we had our first honors dinner, and I was there, and we had a good dinner. All the teachers were there to, well, not all of them, but a lot of the teachers were there to help serve, and we got to talk with all of them, we got to talk to administration, and we had a guest speaker come in, and he told us like his whole story because he was an alum from Shepherd Hill, and that was really nice. And then I also have that, there were senior nights for the past like week or two for all the fall sports, because we're getting towards the end of like the fall athletic season. Also, speaking of that, winter sports registration is now out, which I wanted to advertise in case anyone is interested. We've also had some pink-out nights for breast cancer awareness. I think field hockey just had theirs last night, and I think volleyball did last week. And then we also had the marching band home show two weeks ago, and that was pretty good. A lot of schools came to perform like with their bands and stuff, and there were concessions and awards, and it was really fun. And then some upcoming events I had was parent-teacher conferences tomorrow, and then the teachers are also going to have like a little, like a little lunch provided by the Try and Music Honor Society. And also on Friday, we have, the NHS is sponsoring like a Haunting on the Hill, where it's kind of like a trunk-or-treat kind of thing, where kids can go around and collect candy from all the NHS students dressed in like group costumes. And all the donations are going to go towards our Thanksgiving food drive, where donations will be used to buy food for families this Thanksgiving, and that's.
Sophia, do you want people to be bringing in cans, or do you want them, is money donations okay too?
Yeah, money donations is good.
Okay.
Yeah. And we're also accepting candy donations as well, because we've had.
Candy donations?
Yeah. So if anyone can bring some candy in by Friday, no pressure. And that's all I have for tonight, and I have to leave because I have some academic stuff to take care of.
Understood.
I am a student.
Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you, Sophia.
I will move on to the superintendent's report.
Madam Chair, I do have a couple of items to report on. I did put something in here for Tom Cordomash. I'm sorry that he's not here. I should have added it while he was sitting at the table. It's at the back of my report, and I don't want to repeat some of the things that were stated, but what I would like to share is that he's also the, the department chair for Science at Shepherd Hill Regional High Schools. I think that's a good distinction for him, too. And the two comments I want to add, which again, I should have done earlier, I apologize to Principal Elwell as well, is that, you know, Project Lead the Way has helped us bring 21st century equipment into a 20th century building. And a fun fact is, Mr. Cordomash was part of the school building committee to be part of that because we knew we needed to look at science classrooms within this particular building. But thank goodness, we have Project Lead the Way or Pathways or those organizations to help bring in some of the equipment, because they are doing the best they can in 20th century classrooms with all the lab work that's going on. But he does a wonderful job of leading his department and leading the science instruction here at Shepherd Hill, so hats off to him, and I have already congratulated him. He's certainly a stellar staff member in our district. I do have a couple of other items to share as well. As a, as a reminder, with our continued commitment to school safety, this has been on my report the last three meetings, but we will, all pre-kindergarten to grade four staff will receive an annual alert lockdown inform, counter, and evacuate our ALICE refresher training tomorrow. That's why we have that half-day built in, as we've presented to you as a committee. And then all grade five through 12-plus staff will receive their annual ALICE refresher training Thursday, November 16th, which again is another half-day for all schools and parent-teacher conferences for the younger grades from pre-K or K to four, just as a reminder. So we continue to work with our local first responders. We folded in the fire departments into all of our work this year as well. We, as an administrative team, continue to work on process and procedure around this. We are looking to fold in students at the secondary level this year. We continue to improve what we're providing for all of our staff, and we're also looking at modules that, for our substitute teachers as well, to participate in so that they're fully aware of the ALICE expectations. So it's been a lot of work, but there's, it's the right work for us to do as a district. I am also pleased to share with you that we received a letter dated October 4th, 2023, from the Massachusetts Governor Laura Healy and Lieutenant Governor Kimberly Driscoll, that the Dudley Charlton Regional School District has been awarded a High Quality Instruction Materials Implementation Grant continuation of $111,872, specific to mathematics at the middle school level that was adopted last year, grades six through eight. It's really focused on professional development for this year. It is for FY24. It is not, I don't, I don't think we can push it beyond FY24. It's what it's for. And the Acting Assistant Superintendent Principal of Dudley Elementary School, Ms. Kelly True, who's in our room, in our presence this evening, will oversee the management of this incredible fiscal year 24 grant by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to continue the work we do. Again, it just adds to the grants that we continue to receive to improve teaching and learning within Dudley Charlton without it, and with the fiscal gymnastics we do on a yearly basis, I'm not sure we would be where we are. So thank you to Assistant, excuse me, Acting Assistant Superintendent Principal of Dudley Elementary School, Ms. Kelly True, for managing and seeing this $111,000 through for grades six to eight mathematics at our middle schools. It's fantastic. As I shared last time, some PTO events for Dudley. I'm sharing some more for Charlton this evening. They continue with their fall fundraising. They've done fundraising with a purpose. They already completed a Scarecrows for a Cause, like most fundraising, most events. Unfortunately, the weather has hampered some of their fundraising efforts, because it seems like when we want to do things the most and get out, it's during the weekends, and the weekends, I think we've had at least seven in a row, if not eight, and 16 over the last couple of months of weekend rain, rain events. So they continue to do things. They're doing Cards for a Cause right now. They are also doing a Boone Supply Catalog fundraiser through November 13th, both of those through November 13th. The Charlton PTO also has a Papagino's Dining Out on November 15th from 4:00 to 9:00 PM. 20% of the proceeds go to Charlton PTO. And I've also learned and understand that the Charlton PTO is looking to bring back their Holiday Kids Shop. I guess this was a huge event in the past, yeah? So they're bringing, they're looking to bring that back. More information will be coming. As a reminder, the Charlton PTO meets the first Wednesday of each month, so it's not a school committee night for anyone. First Monday, first Wednesday of the month, at 6:30 PM at Charlton Middle School. Attached to my report, we did receive as a district a very informative letter sent from the Executive Director of the Massachusetts State 911 Department, sharing lifesaving features of 911. I'll be honest, I wasn't even aware of them. These were distributed to the schools, but there are subs, and I included some of those pages, and I hope to get something out through our broadcast system for families to understand. This is really something really good for parents to talk with their kids about. But the two features are, if you can't speak, you can text. You can text 911 now, and then there are certain buttons that you can push as well for 911 for, if you can't speak, to get the right response. So you can press one for police, two for fire, and you can press three for an ambulance, and then you can press four or five as to whether you can speak or not to the dispatcher. The letter did focus on middle and high school students, but we sent it to all of our principals in all of our schools, and I will, again, I'm working on sending something out to the district. One of the last items I want to share with you is that tomorrow, October 26th, it's not in the report, but at the MSAA, Massachusetts School Administrators Association, there is an event at Worcester Technical High School where they are celebrating National Principals Month, but they will be recognizing MSAA President Stacy Monet, Principal of Charlton Middle School, at the event. The event will include the Secretary of Education, the Co-Executive Director of Mass Association of School Superintendents, the Deputy Commissioner, and Executive Director of MSA, Ms. Baldwin. But we look to, some of us are going to support Stacy and look for her recognition and the fact it's great that she is representing Dudley Charlton at this event for us. And then the last item I have is that we, as a group and you as a committee, need to look at scheduling the November meeting and the December meeting so that we can get those on the calendar and correct or adjust them as needed on our website. I do have information about hiring again. I wanted to continue that. We are getting much closer to having complete staff. We still have a couple of openings for paraprofessionals, but this is something we work on tirelessly day in and day out to have all the people we need in place, and appreciate the school committee's support over time for some of the paraprofessional positions, but we are close to filling what we need to fill. So that concludes the superintendent's report this evening.
Thank you. Are there any questions to the superintendent? No? Okay. Moving on, we're going to go to public comment. Is there anyone that would like to make a public comment? Please come up. You can have a seat right there. Just a reminder, you need to state your name.
Name and address.
In town. Thank you. You don't need to state your full address, just the town.
Good evening. Anthony Abbe, Charlton. First, congratulations to Principal True for all her amazing work on that new grant. And I have one comment and two simple questions. The first comment is that the CES School Council met, and it was very productive, and we. The first comment is that the CES uh, test, school council met and it was very productive and we, and very informative. Uh, we all had a lot to contribute and that went off very well. And then my two questions are related in nature. The first part being, what is the district's official area of posting for open meetings? And two, uh, what is the retention for that in minutes? Because I can't really find all the uh, open meeting agendas.
I'm sorry, the second one, you said, what is the what?
Where is, what is the district's official posting place for open meeting agendas?
They're posted at the two town halls.
At the town halls. So you don't have it on the website? You don't have it at the district office?
We do have it on our website as well.
But it's not all the agendas? So for example, city, uh, town, uh, school council meetings are not posted there? Subcommittee meetings aren't posted there? Just, just the school committees, uh, agendas?
School, subcommittee meetings are. School council meetings are posted only with the towns.
And one of the problems is as it falls off, you can't go back and find the minutes. So after they've passed with time. So that's, I think, just something that needs to be tweaked with the website for compliance.
And the website is new this year.
Right, and I understand that's a stipend position, but if you don't know, you can't make adjustments. And that's just something that goes back to the committee's uh, outreach to the public. If, if we can go do look backs, it's easier to um, sometime find our own answers. So just wanted to bring that to the committee.
Just for a point of clarity, our official postings are the two towns, not our website. Our website is an additional posting.
Right.
So the school councils would, if they were posted on our website, they would be with the schools. They wouldn't be at their own link or something like that. So each school would have a school council tab with their school and then have all of that. Because the official postings are the two towns.
Correct.
Okay. Just for clarity.
So that means that if it was a school council, that would go to that, that town only?
No, school councils don't need to be posted.
Yes.
Yes, they do. They're open meetings, so they're required as well.
Yes, they would go to that town.
Okay, but just that town? So like if, if it was CES, it wouldn't go to Dudley? So even if, because, one of the reasons I ask is, like I, I, I spoke to someone in Dudley and they said, well, I couldn't find the CES, you know, the char, the Charlton ones and someone in Charlton couldn't find the Dudley ones and. They're all one district and so it, it just, it's, it's a little perplexing if you're trying to find all the different things of the district and they're all in different places. Consolidation just might be a more streamlined approach.
Point taken. We're gonna take a look at it.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Did you send two questions? Was that?
Uh, it goes with minutes.
Oh, okay.
Because minutes should not be going away. Those should be posted.
I can find them all. For the school council meetings too?
School council, yeah, that one, that one definitely wasn't.
No, school council.
School council.
Oh, okay.
It still comes under the district purview.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. We'll, we'll look, look at that and work on it. Yep.
Great. Do we have anyone else for public comment? No, okay. Um, moving on to new business, we have the Athletic Director Report to School Committee. We have direct Athletic Director Scanlon.
Good evening. Thanks for having me tonight. Um, last time I was here, I had the great pleasure of recognizing Coach Nicole Fossis for her uh, award through the M I A A as a distinguished woman uh, coach in, for the state of Massachusetts. And a lot of what I'm gonna present tonight, I think, goes back to what I spoke about the last time I was here. In regards to the great work that our coaches do throughout our district. Um, and we've had a lot of growth in terms of what we're able to offer and uh, you know, what we have uh, looking ahead in terms of athletics and the programming that we offer in the district. So um, Sophia Poplowski did an excellent job. She covered a lot of territory in regards to what has gone on over the last few weeks. Um, just tonight, we had a cheer showcase in our gym with the Charlton Dudley Youth Football and Cheer Group. And I had a chance to just pop in for two seconds before heading over here. And uh, I was stunned at the number of participants that were in our gym, little, little girls and boys and families. And I mean, probably a couple hundred people packed into our gym. And uh, it was really exciting to see maroon and gold on the younger generation as they were participating in our gym. And encouraging to see, especially as we continue our post-COVID march to, to normalcy, um, to see the involvement at the, the younger level. Um, you know, some of what Sophia spoke about in regards to things like homecoming, I think, you know, there are a lot of areas that we talk. Um, my position is unique in that we're covering three different schools. Um, and we're covering a, a lot of different events throughout the different seasons, throughout the fall, winter and spring. And one of our major uh, events in the fall season is homecoming. Um, and it's, there are a lot of moving pieces that go along with that. Uh, we try to coordinate with many of our student and staff groups throughout the building to offer a, a great experience for our students and for our community. Um, you know, I think that, you know, we've had some excellent discussions coming out of this year's homecoming. Um, really successful events for our teams. As Sophia indicated, it was kind of a rainy day on Saturday in terms of the athletic piece of it. I had an opportunity to chaperone the dance the night before on Friday night. And uh, it was, it was excellent, really well done, very well run. As we headed into Saturday, it was a little rainy, a little overcast and we, we definitely struggled with turnout in terms of people coming out. Um, student group participation with booths and, and the like. So um, in talking with our student council, uh, faculty representatives and some of the other individuals in the building. We've got some great ideas heading into next year and a lot of what we do is, we're already, from an athletics standpoint, and we're already working on spring schedules. And uh, within the next few weeks, we'll be talking about fall schedules. And so as we start to plan those, uh, homecoming will be really a, a large topic of discussion. And we have great ideas. We'd love to build and incorporate a lot more engagement with our community in terms of uh, food trucks and, and student booths and activities that are going on all day long. So um, I, I heard the, the disappointment in her voice and, you know, it, it struck me. Uh, but there are, there are a lot of conversations that we're having in regards to that. Some quick recaps, uh, we as of today are really approaching the end of our fall season. Um, our boys cross-country team unfortunately went in their regular season oh and four under Coach Len Harmon. Uh, incredibly tough league for them in the Midland Watch Use at A League. Uh, our running sports, cross-country indoor track and outdoor track are some of the, the only sports within our program that have stayed in the Midwatch A uh, conference in our league. And it's, it's uh, an absolute uh, gamut of the strongest programs in Central Mass that we compete against. So Coach Harmon has done an excellent job uh, heading in with uh, boys football, who sits at five and two right now on the season under first-year head coach Steve Ide, not new to the district, certainly not new to the football program. But he's done a remarkable job of building rapport with our student athletes and creating a really excellent culture within our program. Um, and I've been, I've been really pleased to see the outcome and the staff that he's built around this team and this program. And the, the students seem to be buying in. So they head to Grafton this Friday night, an incredibly tough matchup. Um, and then of course, we have uh, Thanksgiving at Tantascua this year being played on Thanksgiving at ten A M. Uh, which is a bit of a departure from uh, the last time it was at Tantascua. Uh, boys soccer finished their season at seven, ten and one under head coach Tim Cormier. Our uh, co-ed fall cheerleading, we had a, a slightly different uh, format this year. Typically, we have offered uh, varsity and JV cheerleading in the fall and the winter. This year, we were able to offer, um, rather than JV, we've gone with a game day cheer format. And that's actually something through the M S A A that is a, a more competitive approach. Um, but it's not as advanced in terms of flying skills in the air as competitive cheer might be. So we've essentially gone from a, a, a varsity JV model to really a dual varsity model. Um, and our participation numbers there have been excellent. We're up well over thirty girls who are cheerleading. Um, uh, co-ed golf, uh, you know, we, we were at Nichols Golf Course again this year, Dudley Hill Golf Course. Excuse me, under new course management this year as the, the college took over responsibility for the course. Absolutely thrilled with the relationship that we have with them. They've done an amazing job um, in maintaining the course. And they are beyond accommodating to us and our programs. And remarkably reasonable in terms of the pricing structure and what they assess to us as a fee to use their course. So that's been an, an excellent partnership there. Uh, and Coach Nate Skermont has done a great job with those guys this fall. Um, we are in the midst of our co-ed uh, unified basketball season, which uh, has been one and one so far for our team. Um, we just picked up another game versus Milbury uh, at the end of the season. And uh, I, I think the score yesterday was something like seventy-six to seventy. Everybody on the floor was scoring points. Uh, incredible turnout. We had our, one of our home games here a few weeks ago. And uh, as Superintendent Lamarche can attest to, amazing turnout and uh, great involvement with our student athletes and our community. Uh, and that's Coach Kathy Canole there with the unified team. And they're upright around twenty-five participants on that team, which is spectacular and really, really exciting. Um, girls cross-country, uh, finished the season two and two under, with Coach Nicole Fossis. Um, you know, we, remarkable what she was able to accomplish with only seven girls on the team. Um, and we're still trying to figure out why participation is falling off for the sport of girls cross-country. Um, it just seems that there's not a ton of interest right now. Uh, but I would, you know, a lot of what I discuss with Coach Fossis is that you'll see in, in interscholastic athletics, the tide comes in, the tide goes out. Um, but this just goes to show the great work that she does with those students, only seven students. Um, and highly competitive, again, in that Midland Watch Use at A League. Uh, girls field hockey under Coach Katie Dunn. They went three, eleven and four this season. Which um, this and the next team, the records sound not so great. Uh, but when you look over time from last year and the year before and coming out of COVID. Um, these records are actually indicative of some pretty profound growth in our programs. Um, you know, the, the other sport I would discuss would be girl soccer under first-year varsity head coach Kathy Canole, who takes over. Um, girl soccer went five, ten and three. But both teams, girl soccer has close to forty participants and field hockey was up close to twenty-five participants. And you're looking at two programs that in my estimation, since coming into the district three years ago, were essentially on life support. Um, we were seeking middle-level waivers. We were trying to get involvement at all levels. And uh, you know, they've done an excellent job of uh, engaging students and bringing them in and getting them involved. Girl soccer over the last two years had a total of two wins and two ties, total, over two years. Uh, and they won five, ten and three this year. So to see the, just in, in the losses were so much closer. Um, would we love to see undefeated seasons, of course, but to see that growth and to see the, the narrowing of the gap tells me that with increased participation, we're, we're seeing uh, things moving in the right direction. Um, girl soccer also raised over six hundred dollars for a member of our school community here through fundraising efforts. And then finally, girls volleyball, who uh, just wrapped up their season last night against Bristol Plymouth Tech uh, with a great win. They finished their season at nine and eleven, raised over five hundred dollars for cancer research and awareness. Um, and so between them and some of our other programs, we are on track to, as an athletic department and individual programs, to raise thousands of dollars for uh, cancer research, awareness, support. And that's a, that's a huge, um, I think that's a huge benefit to what we do as an athletic program. That's under Coach Nicole Smith for volleyball. So overall, at Shepherd Hill in the fall season, we've seen our, our enrollment or our participation at around two hundred and sixty-five to two hundred and seventy students. Um, and that again is, is a really great number for where we've been over the last few years. We'd love to see that number increase. Um, and we're doing as much as we can with coaches to, to build that up. Um, our two middle schools, a, as I touch on these, um, at Dudley Middle School, boys soccer had eighteen registrants uh, this year. Co-ed cross-country had thirty-four and girl soccer had seventeen. That brought the total at Dudley Middle School to right around seventy student athletes. For the fall and at Charlton Middle School, um, we were up to uh, around one hundred and sixteen student athletes. And uh, you know, it's been a, a tough season for our middle schools. And I think something that we often don't pay attention to and people outside, we just want to play games. Um, it's been an incredibly difficult season with rainouts, um, delays, reschedules. We're working with opponents who can't get transportation. Um, and we're very fortunate in this district to have a district bus that works to our benefit to get our student athletes to their competitions. But um, even we are not immune to driver shortages and the inability to get people places. So um, many times it becomes even more exacerbated at the middle schools as other opponents in the area are trying to provide for the high school and it starts to trickle down into the middle school. So um, this season has not been without challenges. Just today, we had an interesting snafu with one of our opponents. Um, but participation, these participation numbers are strong and we're really fortunate to see that. And again, it's encouraging as we move ahead, um, looking to the years forward. Um, last few things, student ambassadors here at Shepherd Hill. The M I A allows us to designate a couple of student ambassadors to the M I A. Um, this year, we have Senior Luke Poirier, who will be moving into the senior ambassador role. Last year, he served in the junior ambassador role. And taking over the junior ambassador role will be Junior Hannah Fillion. So uh, we're very excited to have them involved in our program. I rely on these students very heavily for um, to keep my finger on the pulse of our, of our student population. Uh, we're looking to lean heavily on them to help in the development of a student athlete leadership council. Talk about spring activities, discuss homecoming uh, review. And potentially even looking at a uh, winter semi-formal dance that we, we might look to put on here at the high school. Um, as an opportunity for all of our students in the building. Uh, we've entered into a partnership with Nichols College and I spoke about this at our school council meeting with Principal Elwell. And those who are in attendance were really looking forward to this. Um, just last year, we had instituted or implemented a sports performance coach position. It was really like a part-time stipended strength and conditioning position that would benefit all of our students here in the building. Um, and it's been very difficult, as with everything, uh, to find a qualified credentialed individual to fill those, that role. Um, and fill that role consistently. So um, uh, we had Nichols College reach out about some summer camps and uh, we tried to jump on that opportunity to say this may open conversation to something a little bit larger and a little more in-depth. And so we're gonna utilize that partnership and geographic proximity to Nichols College to um, actually offer a sports performance position essentially here at the high school. Um, utilizing the graduate assistants and strength and conditioning staff and sports performance staff at Nichols College. Um, and, and I can't speak highly enough of the staff. I met with their athletic director last week. Um, and fully in support of uh, doing everything they can to provide a benefit to our school and our student athletes. And this really would be mutually beneficial for their program as well to bring another grad assistant on board for their purposes. Um, the athletic department has partnered with a company called Power Add. And uh, there may be people in the community who have uh, heard of this company or have been contacted by this company. Um, they've been around for about three decades, thirty years. It's a professional fundraising organization. Um, and they work specifically with athletic programs to raise funds for certain projects, nothing that's too large. But also, um, nothing that's tiny. These are things that um, programs really would like to see. That may be above and beyond the normal budgeted items. Um, and so they go out and, and solicit outside fundraising. Um, today, I actually received notice that we were fully funded for a new uh, fully digital scores table for indoor sports here at the high schools, that basketball, wrestling, volleyball, cheer, anything like that. Um, that's indoors, fully digital uh, scoring table with, with dynamic graphics. Um, and this is a, this is essentially a ten thousand dollar piece of equipment that we will receive at absolutely no cost to us. Um, and we own it. It's our equipment. It, it comes through the company. Um, and it's, this is already a, a very beneficial partnership for us to get things that we would love to have, that we might not otherwise be able to, to get. Um, in conjunction with the release of the new district website, we've also extended our utilization of the Play On Sports Platform. Which is a, a bunch of sports management software that we utilize in the athletic department. This is at both the high school and the middle schools. Um, this is going to offer a standalone athletics website, um, which can be found online at shepherdhillathletics.com. It was just released yesterday, so we're gonna get in there. We're gonna start updating those pages. Um, but we get significant discounts, improved cross-functionality through this platform for us with a lot of our scheduling software. Um, this is gonna give us an opportunity to create more engaging content and provide um, more content readily accessible to members of our community who would be accessing those online platforms. Um, so that platform, digital live streaming, digital ticketing, um, our pixel lock cameras, which are at our turf field in our gymnasium for automated live streaming and film collection for data analysis. Um, you know, the ease and convenience of the digital ticketing through GoFan. We've begun using that and actually started utilizing it for concessions. Uh, in conjunction with our student council at football games. And uh, this gives a cashless option for people that, you know, we're getting to that time where people are no longer coming to the gate and coming to our games with pockets full of cash. Everyone's looking to use a card. Everyone's looking to use Apple Pay or Google Pay. Um, and this is just gonna allow us, as, as Superintendent Lamarche um, alluded to earlier, start to move into the twenty-first century of what we can offer. And we will keep cash options always, but this at least allows us to meet the needs of our fans and spectators. Um, and what else? Scoring software, arbiter scheduling. Um, this is really gonna be a critical resource for us to give uh, end to resource for us to give end-to-end user information, where we can put information and notices out to our families and our communities. Again, as Sophia indicated, last thing from me, fall sports regist, excuse me, fall sports, winter sports registration is now open. The registration, it can be done online at Final Forms. This is for both middle schools and the high school. The registration is open as of Monday of this week. It will close on Wednesday, November 15. And this gives families and students a few weeks to get signed up and registered for winter sports, and then allows time for our school nurses and our staff here and at both middle schools to clear students and make sure that they're eligible for participation. At the high school, we will be offering, again, basketball, boys and girls, indoor track, boys and girls, wrestling, which is coed, and you've all approved a middle-level waiver. So we are allowing eighth-grade students from Dudley and Charlton Middle School to come up and participate on that team, as we've done for several years now. And also in a cooperative agreement with Bay Path and Tantascua. So we have a couple of students from both of those schools that participate in our wrestling program. Winter cheer, which we will, again, stick with the game day and competitive format, so the dual varsity format. And then we are maintaining our cooperative agreements with Auburn High School for this year, and we'll have to revisit it into next year as those agreements come to an end. Ice hockey co-ops with Auburn for boys and girls ice hockey. And then at our middle schools, as we have traditionally done, we'll be offering boys and girls basketball and coed cheer in the winter season. So that's my recap of the fall. I appreciate the time. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them. But otherwise, that's what we have.
Does anyone have any questions? Thank you.
No, I just have a couple of things I could point out. Sorry. Mr. Scanlon won't point this out, but as you know, we didn't get our budget until August 17, and sports athletics was up, up in the air. And so certainly, Mr. Scanlon had been bouncing around quite a bit with process and thinking about it. We did try to do a soft launch on it, waiting, anticipating August 17th with the idea of possibly if it didn't go through August 17th, we may have to reduce later in the year. And so Mr. Scanlon deserves a tremendous amount of credit for kind of being a rubber band and, and working with us on all that kind of, all that kind of stuff. You have to keep in mind, the district our size would have the athletic director, first of all, which was not full-time until my second year here, would have had a full-time athletic director, but also carries an administrative assistant with it as well. Mr. Scanlon does all that on his own. He deserves a tremendous amount of credit. As I've shared with this committee before, we have, going above and beyond is a job requirement. Mr. Scanlon proves that in and out all the time. He's everywhere, he's at all these events. Him and Chelsea are trainer. They are a team to be, to be reckoned with. They do a tremendous job for us as a, as a district. But I have to, a couple of things. One is going, participating and going to watch some of these events and stuff. I'm amazed at how, how it's changed. How many schools now call up and say, sorry, we don't have a JV team, so we're just going to send varsity now. It just, it just, it's not, it's not, you can't, it never was, you set a schedule and then you just follow it because there were always some adjustments, or umpires didn't show up, or refs or something like that. But the, it's, it's a daily grind for Mr. Scanlon to deal with competitors who's coming. We had, we couldn't get our middle school players somewhere because we didn't have a driver, but the other towns said they'll send some, send them here. But to try to schedule all of that, this is seven days a week. This is not, you know, just a nine-to-five job for Mr. Scanlon. So he deserves a tremendous amount of credit. Going back to the cashless process, having students that are student athletes, there were some districts that go no cash. That's, it's what they've done. And yeah, the first couple of times for me as a parent was, it was PIA, there's no question about it. You get there, you get a scan, you got to break out a credit card, they don't take PayPal or whatever, all those kinds of things. So you have to do that, and it just, it clogs it up. But that's the direction everyone's going in. I appreciate that our athletic department is still going to, you know, transition with cash options with it as well. But that's the direction everyone's going in. So, but, you know, forging relationships with Nichols College and all of that, again, Mr. Scanlon deserves a ton of credit for, for Shepherd Hill and middle school athletics. And again, when I, I'm going to hammer it home, ADs at high schools don't typically have middle school sports athletics as well. Mr. Scanlon takes care of that, too. So, you know, I applaud Mr. Scanlon for his work for our district and for the student athletes. And, you know, again, this year for all of us was something to get into, but it seems like we just, athletics seem to just flow really quickly and really well for us. And participation, the excitement on the field that I've seen has been phenomenal this year.
The excitement and engagement are two of the biggest improvements I've seen in the last three and a half years. And I appreciate the kind words. And I think that our staff has done an amazing job. And I hope to see that participation carry into the winter season and certainly into the spring. And we've got a lot of great things in the horizon.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to the report of the Director of Finance and Operations, Director Matthews.
Thank you very much. A couple of items for the committee this evening. First, the community eligibility program. The USDA, the United States Department of Agriculture, has passed a final rule stating that the minimum identified student percentage shall be lowered from the 40% threshold to 25%. Under this new rule, our school district will qualify for the community eligibility program federally funded for the upcoming four-year cycle that would start next school year. This means that the entire district will qualify for breakfast and lunch at no charge for the next four years, regardless of what the state does with its existing program. We've been on the cusp of qualifying for this at individual schools, there's, you can combine schools, you know, so we've had, we've approached that, that level through those combinations. But lowering it to 25% is fantastic. So that's, that's really a, a good step forward. Again, and this is immaterial of what the state does. So federally funded, again, one breakfast, one free breakfast and one free lunch per student. If somebody wants a second lunch or an à la carte menu or something like that, they obviously have to pay for that. If there are no questions, I was asked to provide some information on fees. I provided the history of where we're at with current fees and the last votes to make those changes. In the past couple of years, the Budget and Finance Subcommittee has reviewed the fees charged, but not made recommendations for changes, given the societal and economic conditions. I do want to note, though, there seems to be some level of confusion, that's perhaps not the right word, but the mixing of fees that the school committee sets versus fees for student activities. So the examples I provided were the music programs and ski clubs. Though, there's a cost associated with a student participating in those student activities, but those aren't fees set by school committee. They're fees to go skiing, you know. So I'm not sure where the committee wants to go with this particular discussion.
Can I ask a question? You have on the athletic fees, it's $150 per student per season with a family cap of 500. Is that 500 in a season or 500 in a year?
For the year, I believe.
For the year, okay. Does anyone have any questions or want to have a conversation about the fees?
We, we do use, I'm sorry, we do use the preschool fees to help offset our budget each year to the $260,000. And the parking fees are reserved for making, repairs and those sorts of things for here at Shepherd Hill. You know, the curb that was recently installed was paid for from that particular fee, the curb cut from the sidewalk. That and the cameras and the straightening of the sidewalks are about the only expenses I recall being charged to that particular account in my time here.
Do you have any questions?
I know we've talked a lot about the fees and the potential to start charging fees at the, at the middle school level, especially after sports was on the chopping block in the last fiscal year. My only question for the rest of the committee is, if we were to implement fees for the middle school, would we start it immediately or would it be for next year, now that it's already one-third of the way through the season or through the school year? Like, we've already completed fall, now we have winter and spring. So when these were adjusted, were these before the school year started typically, or?
I would think they typically are before a school year starts.
Yes.
Yeah. And, and you can see, actually, even for the parking fees, they were voted to be increased two years, two years consecutive. And I think that vote occurred in September of 2015.
I've, I've done a little bit of my own research, and I've found schools that charge more, that have a lower, a lower cap or a higher cap, but charge less per sport. I've found towns that charge less. We kind of fall somewhere in the middle, which I was actually thinking we were going to fall kind of low for what we charge, was my thought. But when I started seeing other, other districts charge about 100, but might have a bigger cap or a cap per student, or, it was like all over the board. There was like no rhyme or reason. But in some districts, don't charge at all. So we really are kind of right in the middle. But I do think, I mean, there's stipends that have to be paid at the middle school level for the coaches. They're, they're paid the same as a coach at the high school level, the middle schools.
I'm not sure it's apples and apples.
Yeah, not the same cost, but they're paid.
Yes.
No, but they're, like, the stipend is probably the same, but you don't think it's...
I'm not sure it's the same exact value.
Yeah.
And that's why I think if we were to charge at the middle school, I, I wouldn't want to see 150. I would see, I would want to charge less at the middle school. And maybe have the same cap per family. But that might have to be in the entire district. Because like, if you have some at the middle school and some at the high school, you know.
Just a reminder, if we have an eighth grader that is playing at the high school level, they do have to pay the high school fee.
Yep.
In fact, Mr. Scanlon is here. I don't know if you want him to come up to the table while you talk athletic fees and stuff. Because I know he's, he's done a lot of research on middle school, because you also have middle school athletes that played all three sports. You know, it's not like you have new revenue from, from, from some of those participants with a cap and all that kind of stuff. So I don't know if you want Mr. Scanlon to be here to talk about it.
If he wants to. I just know personally, from talking to other families in the district, they would rather pay a fee and have, have good uniforms available and have updated equipment. And like, they don't want to just get by. They'd rather pay fees. And that's not everyone.
What, can I ask, where in the middle school are they seeing like subpar equipment and uniforms?
So it happened last year with the soccer, the girl soccer. They used the old basketball uniforms, the, the boys' basketball uniform. It was kind of reused for the soccer.
Got it.
So there was, and it was because, I guess, uniforms had been misplaced and there was a big, big problem. And they've gotten new uniforms, but it was just kind of, it was one of those things, you know, it was coming off the heels of COVID and things may have, it was new and taking over, like, it, there was four positions combined. So I don't really know where it happened, but many parents were upset. I know you had, that's when we had spoken. And so many parents were just like, if this is because of cost, I'd rather pay a fee than have my child go out on the field in a uniform that they're embarrassed to wear. And, and we have to think about that across the entire district. You know, just like you said, it's great to go out and see the maroon and gold in the, the gym. Whenever we're sending all of these different athletic teams to an event, they're representing Shepherd Hill or Dudley Middle or Charlton Middle. And so we want them to look nice, too, you know. And unfortunately, just like with anything, the styles constantly change. Like, when I go to a cheer comp, I can tell which uniforms are probably brand new and which ones aren't. And, you know, I mean, not that, maybe that, that actually does affect scores, their appearance and stuff. So not that, you know, it's the biggest deal. But parents are willing and would like to pitch in so that we look presentable.
I think we need to qualify. Some parents, some parents may not be able to afford that as well.
And, and there are other ways. I mean, I know, because I have friends that do the cheer at Shepherd Hill, a lot of the cheer, they don't, and we see it in our warrants, there was reimbursement because cheerleading does almost all of their funds through fundraising. And they do extensive, and the parents are required to participate. And they run those cheer, like, with 40 schools. It's a well-oiled machine when you see it happen.
If I, if I may speak to that, I think, by the way, the Halloween Cheer Invitational is October 29th this weekend. So please come out and support the cheer program. But, you know, the, the interesting thing, and this is, this really is a historical nuance to Dudley-Charlton, is that the cheer program is not part of our budget. We don't actually budget at all for cheer. They are essentially a self-sufficient, self-sustaining entity within, you know, in, in reality, cheerleading is actually, falls under the MSAA, whereas all of our other sports fall under MIAA. And, you know, traditionally, in most districts, you're going to find that the athletic director oversees cheer as the principals designate because, you know, it's a sport and it falls in line with everything that we do. But they do operate by slightly different rules, slightly different oversight. And as long as, as I've known it to exist in this district, cheer has always been a self-sustaining program. And, you know, to their credit, they do an incredible job fundraising, which allows them to do things that maybe some of our programs that are budgeted don't quite see the turnover in uniforms that cheer might see. But it also comes at a cost because parents are expected to be here numerous times throughout the year. They charge admission to these events. And Coach Andre, Loretta Andre, and Coach Tony Sargent, I mean, the work that they put into these events is unparalleled. I mean, these are enormous events that, by all, by all accounts, I don't, I don't even have to worry about. I mean, we, they arrange custodial coverage, they arrange police details, they arrange, I mean, you're talking upwards of 40, 50, 60 teams that come here from around the state with hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of spectators. There's no event that goes on in our gyms that is bigger than these cheer invitationals. And so they...
It's actually pretty impressive.
It's impressive. So they earn those funds, and they spend those funds. And so you see that come through frequently. You know, but going back to the middle school stuff, I think you, you really nailed it on the head that, and for the high school as well, it's, it's a smattering of, of fees around Central Mass, around the state. The last district I worked in charged nothing, nothing across the board. And prior to COVID, we started to do a lot of research and a, and a heavy dive into, we may be reaching a point where what used to be the rule of no fees is becoming the exception in districts. And maybe we need to implement that. And so we did a ton of research. And similar to what you're saying, everywhere we called, it was something different. 100, 150, 300. There are school districts within our league that we're a part of that are charging almost $400 a season with a family cap of, you know, 1,700, $150. And that's not counting if you play ice hockey, in which case that's its own fee, which could be close to $2,000 and not count towards the family cap. There's many nuances there as well. So when it comes to the middle schools, I have not personally experienced a middle school that assessed fees. I am familiar with a few districts within Central Mass that do assess fees at the middle school level. You know, I tried to provide some rough data as we were entering the last budget season in terms of what it might look like roughly if we implemented a $50 fee or a $75 fee. You know, I certainly don't think, to your point, you want to walk in at $150, because the experience and the amount that we're able to, as we talked about, busing is a difficult challenge. So we can't offer quite the same experience as you might get at the high school. You know, we do our very best, and we want the experience to be a positive one. But, you know, for example, the, the soccer uniform issue kind of came up really quickly, and we were sort of caught a little bit off guard by it. And, you know, certainly some confusing budgeting that went on there, some lack of uniforms and things, a lot of factors that went into that. I think there's no magic bullet, and I'm sure Mr. Matthew could, could contest to that. There is no magic bullet. There is no number, I think, that's going to be the right one for anybody or everybody. Certainly assessing a fee, if people, if there is a segment that is willing to do it, you know, and obviously there's more conversation to it. But we, you know, at the high school, anybody who is, has an approved free and reduced lunch application on file has their fee completely waived. And that's a significant portion of our student athlete population. And it's reflected in the totals that you see collected each year. You know, I, I don't know the percentage off the top of my head, but you're looking at certainly 10, 15, 20% or more that are free and reduced. And they pay $0. Not 150, not a reduced rate, it's $0. Cheerleading pays $0. Um, cheerleading pays zero dollars, but they go and fundraise. Um, Unified Sports pays zero dollars. We didn't assess a fee for Unified Sports. And and you know, at the middle schools, they're currently paying zero dollars. And when you're looking at the scale of the of the operation, it's much smaller than what we're doing at the high school. But certainly implementing a smaller fee there would help to offset some of those costs if that's something that the committee felt was prudent to do. Um, you know, it's certainly feasible. I think if we're looking at a family cap district wide and you have students at multiple schools, um, we'll have to wrap our head around the tracking of that information and making sure that we're able to to meet the needs of the families that are doing that. But I would imagine if you implemented something at the middle school, we would be looking at the same process of if you have financial hardships, we can offer a a payment plan. We can just say, hey, let's come up with some check, checkmarks, um, some benchmarks to pay maybe once every other month or something. Um, and certainly also free and reduced lunch applications are something that we use as a criteria to waive those fees completely. So.
Can I suggest that we send it back to the um, Budget and Finance Committee to look at that and look and see whether that's an option? For the athletic fee? Yes.
So I know I've brought it up at several meetings in the in the past. Um, I'm all for increasing the fees as well as um, instituting middle school fees. Every time I brought it up, I've been told it's not the right time to talk about it or this isn't the right uh, forum. So now you're suggesting bringing it back to a budget subcommittee. I I just
This is the first time you spoke on this, so.
No, it's not actually.
No, no, hold on. This is the first time you're speaking right now. So that's what I was asking. Do you do you like? The only reason I say to bring it back to Budget Subcommittee is because the Budget Subcommittee should look at what the other fees are being, like, we can't just it wouldn't be a good practice for us to just decide that now like without without the information that we may need. And the Budget Subcommittee can go through and look at the different information that we can gather from different towns and from other districts and like kind of figuring out what what is, what should the cap be, what shouldn't it be and and get some more information and bring it back to committee. Because that that is how the subcommittee process should work.
Now, is that even something that's in our purview that we're supposed to
Fees are, these fees are in our purview.
Okay.
And Caitlin sounds like already did the research. So bring that to the committee and then make recommendations.
You might have even more data. Like, I'm just reaching out to people in different districts that I know, you know, you have a little bit more of a access to multiple districts, but it sounds like it's kind of all over the place. So I don't know. And that's what I was finding when I was looking at and I was, I was looking in North Row and Webster and Oxford and even towards Cape and, you know, so it wasn't just like towns right around us. It was similar towns to us, different towns than us. And it, I was like, okay, this makes no sense to me because here's a very wealthy town and they charge less probably because they don't need it in their budget. You know, they might have a huge operational budget where they don't necessarily need, or some towns charged a lot because they're changing over their uniforms every two years or I don't know why, but or they have a turf field that they were able to make, you know.
And and sometimes it can be like the amount of like the involvement of the booster club and how how much that brings in a year that can can decide that as well.
And so I I I had that conversation with him last um, fall because that had been circling around too and I feel like you know, the Dudley PTO covers K through eight and the Charlton PTO covers K through eight in Charlton and then Shepherd Hill kind of has its own different fundraising opportunities. So it's hard to rely on those when the PTO, you know, really should be for K through eight and if we're giving money, it might be for the middle school. But what about K through four, you know, so it gets a little bit sticky because we're regional, but we're only regional. We're really only mixing at the high school level, but we oversee Charlton, Dudley, Shepherd Hill. So it's it's a little bit tough to rely on that fund, I think. Those type of funds, if that's what you're talking about, like DCF and stuff like that. Um, but um, even beyond athletics, look at show choir and that's another one that the parent involvement is mandatory. So like that huge craft fair, that's mandatory for involvement and all other opportunities to volunteer, they're selling tickets for the shows and stuff. So you see these programs that are very successful, but the demands are there. It might not be financially and sometimes it is because I know show choir is very expensive too. Um, but so having some demand for athletics. If we want to see our athletics be successful and grow, and I think we do, I mean, that's what sometimes attracts people to school choice and we talked about that in Budget Today, you know, being enticing to school or students all over and enticing people to stay and want to come to Dudley Charlton. Sometimes athletics is what it is, you know, so I would like to see our programs continue to prosper, continue to, that's that's sometimes what gets in the newspaper and on the front page and different things like that. So it's not necessarily academics, but it's a big part of, it's a big part of the school district, so. I would, I don't want to see it go away because we didn't fund it when we had opportunity to implement some fees or raise them. So I don't, I don't want to keep kicking the can down the road either. So.
Any other question?
Um, oh, no, just kind of a statement along with um, what Caitlin said. I did some research myself just to kind of understand. Um, just taking like the teams that we played um, for football. Um, you know, and it does, it goes all over the place. It's it's crazy, like just, you know, like four hundred per sport or three hundred or one hundred or none. Um, you know, it kind of goes all over the place. Um, Nishova actually had a really nice breakdown on their uh, website that I was able to print out. Um, they do a free fee structure that kind of like goes down first sport, second sport, third sport, but in the end, it kind of ends up being the same as what we charge, you know. Um, but that being said, uh, they do have a user fee for Unified um, Sports at seventy-five dollar um, per sport. And then middle school user fee at fifty-five per sport, just as a guidance of what other, you know, areas are doing. Um, I don't disagree with increasing um, the fee. Granted, we need to kind of figure out what that amount is. Um, and we do have programs for those students already, you know, that can't afford that additional amount. Um, you know, that's that is in place. And also just to understand that if we did increase it, that would just defray the operational budget being, you know, used by athletics too. So that will end up helping our bottom line as well. So. And as an athletic parent, I absolutely don't mind or wouldn't mind, wouldn't have minded um, over the last four years to have participated, you know. I'm fortunate enough that I, we, our family, we could. And I think a lot of families can, um, if it meant supporting and making sure that, you know, that department didn't go away. Coming from um, youth sports where, you know, you get your packet of calendars, you know. It is what it is, but you were required, um, you know, and asking for parent involvement, it it works in certain areas. I think it can work in others as well, um, you know, as a buy-in. So. However, we need to handle this. I agree. I do think that it needs to be increased, but.
Just one more thing. Um, Mr. Scanlon, you had indicated seventy students DMS, hundred and sixteen students CMS just for the fall season. Takeaway twenty percent due to um, reduced um, requirements. We're down to about a hundred and fifty kids, fifty dollars a kid. That's seventy-five hundred for just one season. So for the school year, let's say we in implement this next year, we're looking at over twenty-two thousand dollars that as Jamie said, we can defray from the operational budget. And and again, it's it's a small amount. But if we do that here and then we do it somewhere else and somewhere else, twenty-two thousand can turn into a hundred thousand with multiple small changes. Um, and that's just middle school. I think the fees should go up for high school as well, but as you said, I know going back to the budget um, committee.
You're more than welcome at any time to make your own motion. It's it is
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry. Uh, because because I
So many times.
You have not made it in a motion. So if you want to make a motion, you're welcome to make it.
Madam Chair of School Committee, uh, because this is where we talked about earlier that this would be setting it for next year. I think there's time for us to continue to work on this and have a proposal, have Mr. Scanlon attend the next budget stop uh, to come up with a proposal for athletic fees for us for both middle and high school, what that would look like. Uh, but I I think we have to set up in December before we get into the budget so we know how it's going to offset. So I think if we meet the timeline of having a vote in December, but make sure it's on the agenda for December, I think that that would work for for all parties um, here uh, discussing it to to uh, address this, uh, because it sounds like there is, and then we were also, we don't have two members here as well, so. Um, maybe everyone will be there for the December meeting and we could, because nobody wants to miss the show choir presentation to the school committee in December from high school. Um, but uh, but it gives us a chance for Mr. Scanlon to come up with a proposal that we can, uh, Budget Finance can endorse and then bring to the full committee here's an endorsement in in what fee structure we're recommending for that.
Right.
Okay.
Does Budget and Finance have time in their, who's on Budget and Finance again?
Don't forget that.
Oh, great, great. Do you have time in your in your next, in November to be able to discuss that and bring it back for December?
The November, I don't think that was, the meetings haven't been set because we're waiting for the full committee's meeting date, I think.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Okay. Great. So we'll set that to
Policy Sub did set a meeting, because we're on a Friday.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay.
Okay.
All right. Do we, can I also ask, because we have other fees, do we want Budget and Finance to look also at the preschool fee?
I would look at the three fees that we charge.
Look at the three.
Typically, every year we do what Budget Finance recommends to none. Well, since I've been here, we've recommended no adjustments. As you can see, a lot of the adjustments happened definitely before I came here, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good. Great. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon.
Thank you.
So we'll move on to the Dudley Middle School grant for
Thank you.
For matching bids.
Um, so Ms. Stacy Lynch from Dudley Middle School has applied and been awarded the grant from MIT for Empowering Student Citizens uh, Student Citizen Scientists Mini Boat Program for Global Ocean Stewardship. This grant is for ninety-one hundred dollars. However, it also has a matching component of up to fifty percent from the district. Uh, these uh, matching funds will be covered by fundraising, which is uh, around twelve hun- twelve hundred dollars to date. And in-kind donations, uh, one thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars to date, uh, but may ultimately need to be supported by the general fund. I bring this before school committee because um, if there if there's a requirement of a uh, of actual expenditures from the general fund budget, it's appropriate that school committee is aware of it. They do plan on trying to do to cover all of the um, matching component through fundraising or in-kind donations. But again, there is a possibility that it will affect the general fund budget. I'm letting you know, uh, obviously if there's discussion, uh, that needs to happen.
It's an FYI.
Yes, good, Caitlin.
Why did you say like the total amount? I know she's raised almost three thousand or a little over. When is the goal for her to
The matching amount would be four thousand five hundred and fifty dollars.
But what, by when?
Uh, the end of the grant.
Which is?
The end of this, uh, school year.
Oh, okay.
And she's already has almost three thousand dollars?
Yeah, she's two-thirds of the way to her goal.
Oh, okay.
So the maximum exposure to the general fund budget is one thousand five hundred and fifty dollars at this point.
And So they've they've already fundraised roughly three thousand
Yeah.
Out of the forty-five hundred that they need.
Oh, okay.
So we have about fifteen hundred to go.
And they're receiving ninety-one hundred.
Are they, are they charging, you know, I know that in the middle school, they do charge for programs. Are they charging for this program?
Uh, not at this point in time.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't think so, but I thought that the kids participating might be doing part of the fundraising.
Exactly. They're selling the T-shirts and those sorts of things.
Do you want us to have a vote on that?
No.
Again, it's up to you if you want to vote to support it so that it's it's formalized or if you just want me to report back, you know, at a future date.
School committee typically doesn't uh, vote in fundraising or um, grants.
Okay.
So I wouldn't, it's it's, to me, it was this FYI in case we need to tap into the operating budget to support it, but it looks like we're not, but you need to be aware of it.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, got it.
Next is the Medicare renewal for the plan year two thousand, uh, January two thousand twenty-four through December two thousand twenty-four. Um, the Mass Strategic Health Group has provided the Medicare plans for the district since two thousand twenty. Uh, the district will continue to offer the Medicare, uh, Aetna Medicare Advantage Plans with a rate cap guarantee in place, uh, but increased utilization from Mass Strategic Health Group members. Aetna has offered a seven dollar increase to the plans, uh, less than the ten dollar rate cap guarantee. Uh, this will make the pricing for the plans for two thousand twenty-four, two hundred ninety-three dollars and sixty-eight cents per month with the district responsible for fifty percent and the retiree responsible for fifty percent. Uh, again, as a reminder, these, this rate cap um, would still leave our rates lower in, I think it's two thousand twenty-five than they were in two thousand nineteen. I ask for the committee to vote.
Um, I entertain a vote to approve the Medicare renewal plan for January two thousand twenty-four to December two thousand twenty-four. At a rate of two ninety-three points, uh, two hundred ninety-three dollars and sixty-eight cents per month.
Some move.
Some move, but you agree?
Second.
Okay, discussion? Does anyone have anything?
Sounds like it's a good deal.
Yeah.
Right, right. Take it while you can. Okay. All those in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you. Um, another update on the middle school roofs. Uh, final inspection of the roofs has been completed. There were no issues with installation or workmanship. Uh, and the manufacturer of the roofs will be issuing their warranty imminently. Uh, one of the potential avenues the district can now explore at these two schools is the installation of roof-mounted solar systems. Uh, we would like to bring in um, the state partner for um, solar projects to the November meeting with school committee along with Mr. Karen and um, MDM uh, Engineering, uh, who did the roofs. Uh, as we've talked about, you know, to thank them for a very successful project, but also to explore um, and have a presentation on the possibility of of solar. Our our initial discussions um, with Select Energy point to potentially very positive um, news in this area. I think it might be a worthwhile project and certainly worth at least hearing about. And last, uh, disposal of surplus equipment. Heritage School is seeking to dispose of twenty-four art tables that are old and damaged. I ask school committee to vote them as surplus equipment.
I entertain a motion to um, deem the surplus equipment for Heritage School of the twenty-four art tables that are old and damaged.
Some move.
I'm gonna go with some move to Pancheck today. Answer?
I'm trying.
I know, go on. Do I have a second? Great. Okay, um, any discussion? Yes.
Um, where do twenty-four art tables get disposed of and is there a cost to dispose of them?
We will do our best to avoid any costs. As we always have.
We're gonna put them out on the sidewalk. No, just kidding.
Someone can repurpose them, I'm sure.
There's always that possibility.
Nice. Okay, I'm hearing no more. All of, all those in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Great. And we'll move on to the um, Dudley Charm Regional School Committee Subcommittee Updates, Budget and Finance. Do you have any updates?
Just, I would just say that you have the chair and we had a meeting today and
Congratulations.
We hit the ground running.
Uh, so um, Budget and Finance had our first meeting today and um, although Caitlin did um, reluctantly also went for president or chair, uh, we're co-chairing actually is what happened. That's what's happening. It was an agreement made over Zoom, so.
That's great.
Um, going forward, I think it'll be great.
Yeah.
Uh, but anyways, we've laid down kind of the um, the groundwork and a timeline, um, which hopefully, you know, today we'll figure out what the next meeting date is so that way our meetings will align on the Wednesday of the second meeting of the month, I believe is what we um, we're gonna plan to do. And then in the busier months, um, like January and February, we'll end up having potentially, you know, two meetings when things get a little bit busier. And um, I, that was, it's good, we're gonna. And I, that was, it's good. We're gonna, we're gonna tackle this budget season with a smile. For now.
And if I may, you also talked about some items, you know, for future agendas, and clearly, we added another one this evening.
That is, yes.
Okay. Capital, Outlay, and Safety. Am I the only one here?
The Duke.
Oh, but, yeah, Duke, can you mind just touching on that?
We did have a meeting last week, Wednesday. The intention is, I think, to continue those meetings on the second, no, the off Wednesday, the third Wednesday of the month at three P.M., I believe.
Yeah.
Those are all done through Zoom. We'll have a schedule published on the website shortly for that as well, so that people can see that. And one of the topics that was brought up, obviously, is the inclusion now of Shepherd Hill in our capital program, given where we're at with MSBA, and a request for a little further discussion on school safety by Chair Cumming.
Thank you. Okay. And then we have policy review.
Madam Chair, I'll present this evening. I'm happy to announce that Maureen Chickering was named Chair of the Policy Subcommittee. We are being bold right now. We are meeting in person as a Subcommittee, so we had our first meeting last Friday, I think it was. And we have two policies to bring forward this evening that you have seen, at least one, you've seen both of them, actually, but you've seen one more recently. And these are, remember, with policy adoption, there is a distribution placed to it, and then there's a vote on it. So tonight's not a vote, it's just distribution for me to point out the changes that are within these policies. And these policies, there aren't extensive changes, there's nothing really substantive that's changed in these policies. The reason these are coming forward is because they were part of the Staff Resource Handbook, and this is all the feedback we received from the associations about some adjustments that we should make to our policies. So that's why they're coming forward to you this evening. So ACBB, again, you've seen this policy before, and really, the only change in this policy is a required policy. You'll see this annually, because on page five of your policy packet on ACBB, we are required to list, page five, I'm sorry, page five. We are required to list the principals of the schools and who the Title IX officer is. So those are the only edits for ACBB. And again, you'll see this annually, because we're required to do this annually, it's required to be in the policy. There were no other changes to this, and so we are bringing this forward for an amendment at your next school committee meeting, unless you have any questions about it right now. Okay, moving on to policy IJNDB. Again, this is in the Staff Resource Handbook, this is the Staff Technology Acceptable Use Policy for the district. There were some changes here to, and this was run through Policy Sub with, oh, I'm sorry, the Policy Sub members are Maureen Chickering and Jean Costello. So working with, again, with the associations and staff and administrators, some of these changes came forward. So on the first page, what you see, you don't have a color copy on.
No.
So you'll see something underlined on the first page. What's underlined, that's, those are the additions, there are no changes to it, those are just additions for clarity. So we're talking about, under no circumstances should staff divulge their personal DCRSD password. If they want to give out their home email passwords to everybody, we can't control that. So obviously, we wouldn't recommend that, but we, this is very specific to Dudley Charlton Regional School District, and also to inform everyone that there is management software and/or directory information, exceptions in credentialing education software, exceptions for strict purposes of teaching in the Dudley Charlton Regional School District. Quite simply, what that means is if we share a piece of software, whether it's a benchmarking software or some other software, and we have a substitute command or something of that nature, we may reset the password, change the password, or share the password for that, but then we'll change it back or make an adjustment to it. Because there are occasions when we do use a, we ask staff to use a piece of software that we do share some of that information. It's an exception to it, but it's not, it's not best practice, but sometimes we have to do that because we don't want to not have the students participate in what we're asking them to participate in at that time, at that given moment. And going on to page two, section C, if you look at the bottom of the second paragraph where staff must also be familiar with, the recommendation from the associations was to say not just be familiar with, to actually review. That's their recommendation, so that is changed to review and abide by all of the district policies, and not just be familiar with it, to actually review it. Okay? Please stop me if there's any questions on some of these edits. On page three of eight, under F, Dudley Charlton Regional School District email, going all the way to the bottom, the last paragraph, there are some adjustments there and additions there, email messages to students when such are necessary, should be classroom-related topics only. Staff must be cautious with any email communication that strays from the educational subject area and must notify their building principal of any such instances that occurs as soon as feasible for, meaning if you're straying from it. So that's, there's a period, hard period there. This is added to it, and again, this is, I commend the associations, they're the ones who brought this forward. For student crisis emails, e.g., threats, examples, threats of harm to self or others, staff must contact school administration during the school day or emergency services outside of the school operational hours, meaning not to wait for somebody to get ahold of a principal, something like that, call your first responders if there is a threat of someone harming themselves or others. And they seem to see that in the communication. So this was a great addition. I support these recommendations from those associations. And I think that that was the last one. I'll have that edit and change. Yes, it is, in this. So that, those are the recommendations, and again, they're coming forward because they are, and they are, they are in green and red and highlighted in the Staff Resource Handbook that we share with the staff, so that they know that they are not in policy yet until school committee does take action on it at your next meeting.
I do have a question on the previous one.
Yeah, the ACBB.
The ACBB, yeah.
Yeah.
We talked a little bit before about you being the Title IX Coordinator. Was that deemed okay?
No, it's not deemed okay, but I have no one else to give it to. That's what we talked about.
Okay.
So what I talked about is if there are Title IX coordination, I will at least be the facilitator of it and work with outside council to do an investigation on it.
Okay.
Because there is nobody else who has the capacity to take this on.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, and that's it for Policy Sub. We meet again on, I think I put it on here already? November seventeenth at ten A.M. in the district office. It is a public meeting, so the door is open for people to come in and sit with us and work through policy.
Great. And I think we just double-listed capital and safety, so we don't need to, are there any other committees that need to report out? I know, I didn't even notice that when you sent that. Okay. All right, before we, oh, yeah, no, we'll go to school committee goals. So we had had our school committee goals that Jean had developed, and with everybody's conversation, obviously. I went through and looked at other school committee goals around the area and shortened them. I don't know how you feel about that. Obviously, it's up to the committee. And I will say too, that on the second bullet on, under Enhanced Educational Excellence, I didn't finish the sentence because I felt like I wanted the committee's input on what you wanted to say there. So I don't know, and if I didn't capture everything, I would want to know that. What, what do you think? What do you like better? Like, what do you want to do?
I'll just start by saying that I do appreciate the more condensed version, although I did appreciate the first version, because it does give, you know, clear objectives and how to measure it and, you know, the target. But unfortunately, it also created a more overwhelming document to look at and then actually achieve. So I appreciate you taking the time to condense everything here. But I don't have any further suggestions yet.
That's okay. We had always, in the past, talked about class size as a goal of the committee. I don't know if this same committee feels the same way, and I don't know if you want to name it, or you feel that that's wrapped up in the statement of maintaining the integrity of a comprehensive educational experience for students.
I certainly wouldn't want to lose sight of that, but whether or not it needs to be itemized, but.
Yeah. Jean also had, there was discussion in here too, that I hadn't included, and we may need to, I don't know, about technology. Looking at the technology. It's under Objective Four, I think it's on the second page, invest in technology and resources to support a comprehensive educational experience. So I don't know how you want to put that in there.
And that kind of falls under maintaining the integrity of a comprehensive educational experience. It would be to bolster the technology department.
I felt that it also went under, like, seeking input of budget priorities from staff, students, and community members, because I think that may come out of that. I don't know.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
What you're doing is you're ensuring students have access to twenty-first century equipment and technologies to, because that enhances their educational experience. So that's really what you're talking about, and I think practically, the way the presentation really showed us what that can do, because you have access to that.
I'm thinking of that second bullet, and I don't know if anyone else agrees, will ensure that students have access to twenty-first.
Century equipment and technologies. Or instead of saying twenty-first century, because that may be overused.
Yeah.
You may want to say for updated or, what's the word? Modern.
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 Modern. Okay, modern equipment and technologies. That certainly speaks to that, so. How does everyone feel on that? So it'd be the second statement under Enhanced Educational Excellence. It would be that Dudley Charlton School Committee will ensure that students have access to modern equipment and technologies. Does that seem to?
Sounds good.
Through the chair?
Yes, go ahead, sorry.
No, that's okay. Under fiscal responsibility, I don't know if that also falls under the fiscal transparency part. But we did mention questioning, doing like an operational audit with the upcoming.
Yes.
You know, budget season, everything. I know that was important and questioned.
Absolutely. Yeah, that was my question, if we wanted to include that or not.
Yeah. I feel like that's something that is, that we should definitely.
Okay.
Have on there.
So it'd be like the Dudley Charlton School Committee will, does anyone have a good way of?
Commence.
Do you have a good way of?
Will. Commission?
Yeah, commission.
Commission, sorry. That's what I was saying, commission, commission and operational audit during the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year. During this, yeah.
And do you feel like that is something that?
Is accomplishable?
Is accomplishable.
Today, no, but yes.
By the end of the year, we could, we could begin that.
We started to poke around a little bit already.
You did. Okay, okay. I think that would be huge. I, yeah. Okay. Is there anything that we're, like, missing that was in this document?
Comprehensive document.
Oh, excellent, comprehensive document. I just don't want to, I don't want to leave anything out. So. So I think, you know, we talked about fees today, and I think that that kind of goes into bullet two, under fiscal responsibility, right? To seeking cost-saving opportunities to ensure a sustainable budget.
Do either of you, or do you see anything that we might be missing, like?
No. Okay. I didn't add this, but I think on bullet one, under Enhanced Educational Experience, I kind of think we should add for all students. Just that, you know, so it's a little more comprehensive, I don't know. Sure. Okay. So what do you, do you feel? Do you want to head more in this direction in the shortened version? What do you feel?
I just know from my last meeting, I felt like Jean wanted ways to measure how we were doing this, so that I think that's why she put in so many numbers to hold us accountable, like.
Right.
We almost made this, we exceeded this, we didn't even complete, you know. So. Obviously, if we do an audit or not, that's a yes or a no, but some of the other things are so, sometimes having it more vague gives us room to really say, yeah, we, we did okay on this, you know.
Well, I think, so I think that probably is our responsibility to make sure we're not vague when we report out. Right? That when we report out, we provide the data. But I don't know that we collected data. We, I know we didn't collect data on our outreach.
Right.
From last year, so we're gonna need to start collecting data. Right?
More evidence.
Right, we need to gather the evidence.
So is that something, you know, that we could share during, like, communications, or anything that we participated in during the week? Or, you know, like, within the, between meetings, or, you know, do like an update, or maybe that's not the place to do it, but just so we can do like an ongoing update of, you know, involvement and that kind of stuff, I don't know, or not.
I mean, I'm wondering too, if we could have a, we could have a folder, like a file that's linked that anyone, the public can look at. You know, if we put a working, like, Google Sheet file that we can just type in, like, when we go to events, and then by the end of the year, we can see it, but it's also publicly available for people to see as well.
It sounds good if you teach me how.
We can teach you how. I don't know, is that something that you feel would be a good thing to do? I mean, I'm just trying to think of ways.
The only other way that I thought we could do it is if there was like an ongoing bullet of school committee goals, say, at the end of every agenda, and we touch upon it, discuss anything that, you know, maybe Budget talked about something in our Subcommittee and touched upon some of these, or someone participated in something and wants to bring it back to the committee, and so.
Okay, I think that's a great idea. Absolutely.
And it doesn't have to be long, it's just.
Correct.
Quick little updates, and that way it can be captured in the minutes too.
Okay. Okay. So where, what do you want to do? You want to make a motion? Do you want the original? Do you want this one? How do you want to do it?
Well, I'm thinking if we.
I'm thinking if we do the shorter version, vote on, and we all keep our copy of the long one to go by on our own, so that we pressure itself. And it should work that way.
That sounds like a, this is to just kind of condense everything that's said here.
Right. And we all have our little sheets that
Yeah.
to go by for our own.
This can be like our evidence gathering, like, workbook, almost.
Right. I think that's good. We can use them together.
Yeah, okay.
I'm just thinking, being mindful that Jean put it together, or should we kind of stave off making a decision and allowing her the opportunity to have her own opinion or comment?
Yeah, that is one thing too, because I literally put these in at 5:30, and she was not able to make a comment. So I, I agree with you. Like, I, I, but do you want to wait another month to have goals? I mean, I think in general, we, it feels like we have consensus that these are where we're heading.
Right.
So I don't think we're, I don't think we're having issues with that. We just want to vote on a final view of it.
If you want to wait for her to have an input.
So do you want to, want to just table this to the next meeting?
Yeah, and we, I mean, unless we read it all out loud, all the edits we did in, maybe we can have a clean copy. Yeah. Just, just so that we know what we're motioning for.
Sure. All right, so we'll do that, and we'll put it on the next meeting.
It would be there anyway, so...
There you go.
If we have it ongoing?
Yep, agreed, agreed. All right, so our next thing is the, we have a field trip from Show Choir. It's a trip to New York on February 16th. It was not on here, but I believe that it's an addition we need to make today.
I thank you, School Committee, for adding this to your agenda this evening. This did come in today. It's been worked on for the last day or two, but it is new to the agenda. I appreciate you considering, taking it on your agenda today and considering it, so I will present it to you. The Shepherd Hill Show Choir is looking for support for a overnight trip to New York City for students in grades nine through 12 in the Show Choir. It is to attend, so I put it on the cover of your packet, the cover of your, your agenda and information. You have the actual form that we use for submitting these. So you can see that the students will be leaving February 16th. That's Friday before February vacation. And they'll be staying two nights till February 19th in New York. They'll take in a show as well. And so I also submitted with you the, the event and what the itinerary would look like, the number of the chaperones that are identified at this point in time. The students would leave at 10:00 a.m. on February 16th. They would stay at the Edison Hotel in New York City. And they would see The Lion King at the Minskoff Theater on Friday evening. Then Saturday, they would attend the Juliet at Stevens Sondheim Theater. Then they would continue to stay, and then on Sunday, they would see Madame Tussaud's Museum. And then they would be returning back on Monday, February 19th. So it's actually three-night stays, sorry. It's three-night stay from February 16th. So the cost per student is $1,200. They are, the facilitator of this, Ms. Bousier, is looking to gain support from grants, Shepherd Hill Music Boosters, Parents Association, Student Caregivers. The total cost of the trip is $70,000 at $1,200 per student. They, there is, there is less information regarding that, because according to your policy, they can't start any of this work until it is approved by you as a committee to move forward with it. So do you have any actual questions at this time? Again, this is hot off the presses, but they do want to get started on fundraising to support this trip in February.
So it seems like the only workshop that they're doing for Show Choir is, is on that Monday?
Correct.
Okay. With cast members from possibly these shows, which is pretty cool.
With the exception of, oh, there, I'm sorry, the scene in the New York City Ballet as well. Sorry. Right, so, yes.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion to approve this field trip?
Still moves.
Nicole, still moves.
Second?
Second, by Caitlin.
Yep.
Okay. Any discussion?
I think it's a great opportunity.
I'm jealous.
Have they done this before? Have they taken a trip like this before?
They have?
Oh, they have.
How many years ago?
Pre-COVID, then?
How many years do you have? Must have been pre-COVID.
It was last year, but I'll check.
Oh, maybe.
Maybe it was last year.
Did we approve that?
I must have missed that.
I don't recall approving that.
Maybe.
Must have been the meeting I was physically here, but I wasn't.
Yeah.
It's okay. It's such a spectacular event. I feel like I would remember that, but who knows?
Yeah.
I think it sounds great.
I thought they went to Ohio.
Two years ago, they went to Ohio.
See, so many, so many trips.
Yep.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, again, thank you again for
Motion carries.
adding this to the agenda and, and approving.
Before we move to adjourn, we do need to discuss the date for the November meeting. One thing that I'm a little worried about is we're going to have business for the meeting, and you're talking about having a solar presentation. And then we also, we had talked about having, like, and kind of having a budget workshop with all the student councils. If any members of any student councils that want to come was, didn't refresh my memory. That is what we talked about, right?
It's like we did talk about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know my heart.
Was that at the last meeting?
Yeah.
Or the meeting before?
I, I think it was the last meeting, because I don't think I was here the meeting before. I thought that that is something that we had talked about that we wanted to do, is have a, but, like, have a meeting with all of the student councils.
School councils.
All school councils, yeah, thank you.
Sorry, that's, yeah.
Yeah. So I don't know what, um... You know, do you want that as a special meeting? You think so?
I think it's going to be too much for a long...
That's kind of what I'm worried about. You don't think so?
Last year, it was combined.
No, we've done, we've done well with managing our meetings.
Yeah.
Well, you, you as a committee have done well with managing your meetings.
We didn't have, um...
Sorry.
No, that's okay. I don't think we've ever had that all-school council meeting, and it could be a lot of people.
No, we have.
We, no, no, we, we introduce them.
We invite them.
But we never had a full discussion with them, like, as a budget kind of workshop discussion.
Because I've been on school councils, and I've never come to a school committee meeting as far as that.
Correct.
Yeah, I'm not sure what it looks like, so that's why.
I spoke at the most recent one in the spring for, for middle school, for Charlton, and anyone who was present, the principal and a member went up and spoke.
Right.
And it was just part of the regular meeting.
Right.
I mean, from a budgetary, it wasn't anything about budget.
Right, and I think that was one of the things that we were looking for as part of, like, making sure we had transparency and getting all the feedback, is that we were...
But, Madam Chair, part of school council's responsibility is to talk about budget with their billing. That's, that's the role. So it's not, even though they would, respectfully, even though they would add input for district budget, their role is really about their school. That's what they're managing.
I'm sorry, if, if, I thought our conversation was to have them come, so...
We definitely want to have them, a time school committee introduce, get to know, see if there's any priorities, that what they're working on, you know, that kind of thing, but I'm not sure. I don't remember the workshop part of it.
Oh, okay. I thought we had said for a workshop, so if you feel like...
But I remember, I don't remember Broadway last year either.
That's true. When do you feel would be the best time to have them come?
I think November, December would be fine.
Okay.
Richard, have we pinned down the roof company, the date that they are able to come?
I'm sorry.
For the solar?
Solar company, do you have the dates? I'm saying, we were waiting for school committee to set a date.
Yeah, we can certainly invite them to the December meeting if that's what the committee chooses.
We typically, in the past, have had meetings the second Wednesday of November and the second Wednesday of December, so I don't know what, what you feel you'd like to do. The second Wednesday of November is November 8th, and the second Wednesday of December is December 13th. I know, let's work on November 1st, because we have December issues in a minute.
I suggest we set the two dates as both second Wednesdays. Average reach out to the company. If they can do the November date, we pencil them in and have school councils come in December, or vice versa, if the company can't come in November. I'm sure school council is more fluid of attending versus a company.
The only question I have about December, and I don't know where Charlton Middle School's schedule is, but Dudley Middle School has their instrumental concert on December 13th. I know sixth grade is five to six, but I don't know if, I don't know if it's later than that for the other grades.
Grade five is, I'm sure, on December 12th.
Oh, okay. So you think they'll be, they'll probably be done by then, and we'd be at Shepherd Hill? So we could possibly...
I'm sorry, but the November 8th, too, remember, may I see conferences that week? So that's why sometimes it's bumped to the week after.
That's correct.
That was something I was, are, who's attending? Is anybody attending that?
Um, I think Jean might be.
I thought Jean and...
And are you going?
No.
No, okay. And was Kelly?
I thought maybe Kelly was going.
Okay. So do you want...
Yeah, Jean said she was.
Do you want, do you want to do November 15th? And we also have all boards on the 7th.
Yep.
So it would, so do the 15th of November, and then do, um... And then the next month, we'll do December 13th? Okay. Yes.
No, he's gonna...
Yep, go ahead.
Madam Chair, if I could just make a plug on the half councils, it may be helpful for us to have our November meetings with our councils to then be able to come in December for that. I think we're still very much in the beginning of your business, and I think November would allow us with our councils to do a little work, a little bit more in advance of that meeting, so...
And do you feel that, like, December's a very tough time for people to come to things? I'm almost wondering, do we put that meeting where we have the school councils come maybe in January? Like, the first meeting in January? Do you want to ask the councils and kind of report back to us? Let us...
I do think it's probably, because I'm looking, my kid's course is on a different day, so like, it's going to affect, there's so many events going on in December
So many in December.
for parents that I think that it would be tough for them, and I agree. It's very early in the stages for the council to come and present something, or talk, or talk about priorities, so hopefully by January.
Does that seem feasible, like, to, how does everybody else feel, like, have this, have them come, like, maybe the first meeting in January?
That sounds good.
And then that way, it gives people time to think about it too, and, and I know we have the Show Choir that comes in December to do their presentation, so... Okay, so I think we're going with November 15th and December 13th. Correct?
That's what I had.
Okay. And November is in Charlton, and December is in Shepherd Hill, in Dudley?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Sounds good. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Jamie?
Second. Second. Nicole?
All those in favor? Okay.
Motion carries.
Thank you.